All the November 15th meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council to order. It's always a pleasure to see everybody with us tonight, and if you would, please stand and join me in the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Lord, we thank you for our many gifts. We thank you for the blessing of coming together tonight in self-governance. We ask your blessings on our meeting tonight. Grant us wisdom and compassion as we strive to do the best thing for all involved. We pray for those in our city family tonight who are ill, suffering, and can't be with us tonight. Grant them peace and healing, and we look forward to seeing them back soon. Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. So, council, before we start, and I forget to do this, with your approval, I would like to move item 9B and make it item 8B. I know we have several members of the public who would like to comment on that. We normally don't have public comment during council business, so it seems like the easiest thing to do would be move that. We certainly don't want to deny anybody the right to speak on that. Is it okay if we do that? Okay, good. Thank you. For those in attendance, if you wish to speak on item 8B, that's the proposed discussion on the Tenant Bill of Rights. We will call that up as an agenda item, so you'll be given an opportunity to speak on that. You don't need to do it during the three-minute normal time, right? Okay, so, our first item is a certificate of recognition for On Your Toes. Would you like to come up to the podium? There we go. Good evening.
Can you see me?
I can see you, yes. How are you?
I'm good.
Good. Thanks for being with us tonight.
Thank you for doing this.
So, this is a certificate of recognition for 35 years of business in Temple Terrace. And many of you know this business. For those of you who don't, you will in a moment. On Your Toes was founded in Temple Terrace in 1987. Owner Sidney, or Sid Schwartz's passion for dance started when she was eight years old. It's about 10, 12 years ago now, right?
Right.
Sid went from student to performer and then to teacher. She taught dance in the late 1970s and 1980s at the Temple Terrace Rec Center and the Temple Terrace Lightfoot Center. In 1987, Sid, her mother, and her stepfather opened On Your Toes in Temple Terrace. Through the years, On Your Toes has become a premier dance store known throughout the Tampa, Brandon, Lutes, and Land of Lakes areas. Being a small business hasn't always been easy, I'm sure that's true, especially with the inception of the internet shopping and COVID. However, loyal customers, dedicated employees, and Sid's love of dance have been a large part of their continued success. It is definitely our honor to recognize Sidney Schwartz and On Your Toes for 35 years of continuous service to the city of Temple Terrace. And having raised two daughters, they know your store very, very well. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, council members, and of course, I've known James for over 40 years from the Rec Center. It's so wonderful to be honored for doing something that I love to do for almost half my life in the city where I live. I thank my mother for spending all that money as a single parent, paying for my dance classes, and together, we opened On Your Toes. I'm so incredibly fortunate to have April Brant Foreman by my side for 25 of those 35 years. I've met many customers who have become personal friends. I've seen dancers that have become professional. They've entered into, they performed on TV. They've performed in the movies. They are Rockettes, and they've been on Broadway, as well as being in professional dance concert venues. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I see children coming through my doorway that are the children and grandchildren of our very first customers, and I cry tears of joy, and I'm so incredibly proud to do what I do and to see everybody grow up and keep coming back to us. I have to say, I have, I would never have been able to do this and spend all the years of six days a week and seven days a week in the past before I had enough help if I hadn't had the total emotional support of my husband, Dan the Man. So, I thank you so much for this honor. I feel so blessed to get it. Thank you so much.
Photo op.
Photo op.
Thank you so much, Mayor Ross. Sure. And, April, you have to come up. You've been a part of this.
You call anybody you want.
Yeah.
You'll go first.
Here, I'm up in front of you. It's like I'm getting there.
You're seriously in.
Thank you. Next item is a presentation by a friend of ours. Many of us know Kelly Sealy. She's here to talk to us tonight about the St. Vincent de Paul Organization. Welcome, Ms. Sealy. It's good to see you guys.
I have a presentation. Can you go on? Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, city manager. My name is Kelly Sealy, and it's an honor to be here tonight representing St. Vincent de Paul Pantry. At St. Vincent de Paul, Joe Latina Center Food Pantry and Garden. We are a non-profit food pantry led by Jesus Christ. We're located at 9807 North 56th Street in Temple Terrace. We're right behind Wells Fargo Bank, hidden back there. We're 100% volunteer-run by amazing angels, and we've been providing for our neighbors in need in the 33617 and 33637 zip codes for nearly 40 years. Focus Academy is a special needs school in Temple Terrace. The students join our angels in volunteering three days a week in their transition year to help them to develop skills for future work. They are truly angels. We also provide volunteer service hours to high school kids and those serving community service hours as a condition of their probation. We would not be able to do this work without these amazing angels. The majority of our food donations come from Feeding America, Publix, Walmart, 7-Eleven, local churches, community members, and other local pantries. But we, what we receive is never enough to fill the boxes, so each week, we have to purchase food items to fill them. We provide assistance with rent, utilities such as TECO, also City of Temple Terrace water bills. Unfortunately, due to the lack of funds, this has been temporarily suspended. When we can afford it, we provide bus passes and gas cards, and it's not unusual for one of our angels to pull money out of their pocket to help a neighbor out when we don't have these available. We have an amazing homeless outreach. We partner with SVDP Cares, Rapid and Permanent Housing, Metropolitan Ministries, the Temple Terrace Police Department Community Outreach Unit, which is a small unit within the department that helps with the homeless, and many more agencies in the area to provide resources for those who are suffering. We have an incredible volunteer nurses and nurse practitioners that assist with healthcare needs. They, they're associated with the Bay Care Community Nursing Program, and they provide blood pressure screenings, medication advice, and equipment and supplies when available, such as walkers, blood pressure monitors, glucometers, and other medical supplies. The Faith and Grace Organic Garden was birthed three years ago. We provide organic nutrient-dense whole foods for our neighbors in need. Our goal is to plant every inch of our two acres with edibles. If there's dirt, there goes a plant. The garden just received the prestigious Hillsborough County Fair 2022 Harvest Award for Outstanding Public and Community Service. The award was presented by Louis Viera, City Tampa District 7 Councilman, who actually grew up here in Temple Terrace. We have a mission bus, and conjunction with Mission Smiles is our annual program that provides prevention and dental care needs for our neighbors in need. This is serviced by amazing local dentists and hygienists volunteering their time and their talents. Each year, the Lopez's, a local family, donate 350 turkeys for our neighbors in need to help celebrate Thanksgiving with them. At Christmas, beginning early November, our neighbors in need sign up for SVDP Christmas Party with the name and ages of their children and suggestions on what their child would like for Christmas. Gifts come from Corpus Christi Catholic Church parishioners, from community members also. Whatever's not donated, SVDP purchases, because we just can't allow a child to go without a Christmas gift. The pantry is funded solely by the generous donations from our community members. The garden has also received grant money in the past from Piranha Family Foundation, De Bartolo Family Foundation, St. Catherine's Episcopal Church, and other fundraising campaigns. We have seen a significant increase in the number of neighbors in need over the past year. In fact, our numbers have nearly doubled. November 5th, we served a record 105 families in less than three hours. We just begun a monthly drive held the first Saturday of the month from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on the property to collect not only food and money, but volunteers. Because our angel volunteers are our most valuable asset, we cannot do this work without them. St. Vincent de Paul would be honored to be able to partner with the City of Temple Terrace to get the word out about this wonderful service providing much-needed assistance to our Temple Terrace neighbors in need. We are stronger together. Ephesians 4:16, Paul tells us, "From whom the whole body, joined and held together by every joint which it is equipped, when each part is working properly, makes the body grow, so that it builds itself up in love." Remembering our hope is in the resurrection of Jesus Christ through the Holy Spirit for the glory of God, we are grateful, thankful, and blessed for the opportunity to share with the City of Temple Terrace, St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry. We invite you all to come out, to tour the pantry, and to see for yourselves how we help our neighbors in need.
Thank you, Mrs. Sealy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause) Might I, could I leave some brochures in case there's?
Certainly. Sure, you could pass them to the clerk. Absolutely. Thank you for coming. So, since we have a fairly short agenda, I do want to say hello from the council to our retired Deputy Chief of Police back here, Chief Sealy, now Captain Sealy with another organization. It's always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you, sir.
You doing well?
I am, thank you, and congratulations, Ms. Donahue, on a fantastic service to our city. I understand that you will be leaving the council, but I appreciate, I no longer live in the city, but I know that the work you do, and I thank you for the work that you're doing. Congratulations, Mr. Chamber, Mr. Schisler, who's not here, and Ms. Fernandez. Thank you very much. It's always good to come home.
Good to see you, chief. So, next item is approval of the November 1st City Council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? Minutes are approved. Next, are persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. We have a three-minute time limit imposed on all speakers from the public. We do ask that speakers come to the podium and begin by stating their name and city of residence. We'd like to assure everybody that your remarks and concerns are taken seriously by the city manager, your elected officials, and the directors in attendance. I currently have no requests to speak on items not listed on the agenda. Are there members of the public who wish to address the council? Okay, very good. Next item, then. Is the resolution approving the St. Augustine and Live Oak Water Main Replacement Project, Phase 3, Construction 2, Harris McBurney Company. Welcome, Mr. Tinch. How are you?
Good evening, everyone. Troy Tinch, Utilities Department Director. I got it right this time. I'm here this evening to seek approval to award the phase, construction of Phase 3 of the St. Augustine and Live Oak Water Main Replacement Project to the Harris McBurney Company. If I could have you pull up the slide? So, you may recall, you somewhat recently approved Faces 1 and 2 of this water main replacement project. This will be the third and final phase. It's located in and around the Biltmore Park area. As with the previous projects, what we'll be looking to do is take offline the rear easement water mains, the four- and six-inch water mains that are located on the back of the homes, and bring those water mains to the front of the house, to the roadway side. We'll also be looking to increase the size from the four- and six-inch that are existing to six- and eight-inch water mains. And what this, again, will do, will not increase pressure, but it will increase volume. So, not only is this going to address concerns regarding Utilities Department and maintenance, but it also touches on the life safety component. Should say the fire department have to deal with a structural fire down in the area, the peninsula area of the city. Additionally, this will kind of finalize up all of the rear yard easements that we're dealing with in the peninsula area. We have just a few that are left that we'll be handling at some point in the future. But for the most part, this will kind of finalize that region and get those easements, those rear yard easements taken care of. So, I did want to also note that this project is funded in this fiscal cycle. We did budget $1,100,000 for this construction effort. The lowest bid received by Harris McBurney did come in just above that at $1,172,080.4. So, I wanted to let you know that the additional amount, the $72,080.4, will be coming out of available contingency funds within that same water and sewer account. So, the dollars have been accounted for. That said, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution approving the expenditure of $1,172,080.4 to be paid to the Harris McBurney Company for the construction of Phase 3 of the St. Augustine and Live Oak Water Main Replacement Project. I will stand for questions if any.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none. Councilmember, questions? I see no questions. Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Resolution is adopted. Thank you, Mr. Tinch.
Thank you very much. And might I say, Ms. Donahue, it's been a real pleasure. You've definitely been a friend to the Utilities Department, and you will be missed.
I'm not going anywhere.
(laughing) We missed it to dice.
So, next, with our agenda revisions, is the discussion regarding Hillsborough County ordinance entitled the Tenant's Bill of Rights. City Manager Carlos Baia will explain.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public. So, at the, well, two meetings ago, this conversation started, I believe, about potentially adopting or being incorporated into the county's Tenant Bill of Rights. And just for a refresher, the conversation about whether the city would adopt it itself, there was some concern about capacity at our staffing level to enforce this. Some conversations were held with county, and the county said they would be willing to incorporate the City of Temple Terrace should this council wish to do that or have that considered as part of their public hearing process. At the last meeting, we broached that conversation, and we were asked to bring more information this week and put it on the agenda, hence that's why we're here. So, the ordinance that the county has, which is the one that is under consideration right now, basically has two elements to it. There's a front-end element, which really deals with landlord and tenant relationships. The principal piece is that it requires that a notice of rights be offered to any would-be tenants, that all landlords would be compelled to issue that to any would-be or actual tenant that's already in place. That lays out, you know, certain protocols that a tenant would have to resort to should they feel that they're being discriminated against, and it also lists agencies that could assist with enforcement. Second element in that front end of the relationship is that the landlord wouldn't be able to preclude anyone from consideration for being a tenant based on what they call a legal source of income. So, if a landlord, if a tenant shows up with a housing voucher for Section 8 housing voucher, the, a landlord couldn't say, no, no, I don't want to consider that. They'd have to consider that along with any sort of other legal sources of income that would be applied, part of the application process. And landlords also wouldn't be able to advertise that certain sources of lawful income would be considered. There are some, some ads out there for, apparently that the county has found where landlords do say, you know, will not consider Section 8. So, the, if this ordinance were adopted here, or we were incorporated into the county, as I should say, that could take place. That would be a violation. However, just to clarify, this ordinance does not mean that a landlord would be prohibited from using the same legal criteria that they use for tenant screening today. So, for example, credit history, criminal history, eviction history, those things would still be the same. So, if you're looking at your tenants and they don't meet your expectations for any of those elements, you could still not lease to those people, but you couldn't use Section 8 income, for example, as a criteria in and of itself. The landlord also wouldn't be compelled to accept a renter that can't pay the asking rent, even with a voucher, because I think that's also a misconception out there. And the voucher, the Section 8, and not to dwell too much on the Section 8, but I think that's a concern that's been broached to the council and to myself. The voucher provides 70% of the rent up to a certain payment standard. In, in, in Temple Terrace, based on the Tampa Housing Authority standards, those numbers range anywhere from, for a one-bedroom, it would be, for example, $1,350 or $1,430, depending on which zip code you're in, 33617 or 33637. For a two-bedroom, the standard would be $1,620 or $1,720, and for a three-bedroom, $2,070 or $2,200, based on, again, on the zip codes. The tenant would be responsible for the balance, the 30%, that the voucher would not pay for. In cases where the rent may be more than the payment standard, a tenant could pay more than the 30%, but they couldn't pay more than 40% of their adjusted monthly income. If that were the case, then the voucher wouldn't apply, and basically, the people regulating the voucher would say, you need to go somewhere else to find a place to live. So, again, just wanted to make sure that people understood there's no compelling reason that says, you know, if you're a landlord, that you have to pursue this, if that, if they didn't meet those criteria, or if your rent was more than the, than the standard that they have set. The second element is the notice requirements to this ordinance. So, it does require that if you are assessing, as a landlord, if you are assessing late fees, that they must be assessed in writing. So, you'd have to include a justification for the fee, the amount of the fee, and whether the fee will continue to accrue. So, that has to be done in writing. If you are terminating a lease, if it's a lease that's at will or shorter than 30 days, you have to do it, you have to provide a 30-day minimum written notice to the tenant. If you are terminating any other lease, based on the current county ordinance, you'd have to provide a 60-day minimum written notice. And if the landlord also is contemplating a rental increase of greater than 5%, they would also need to provide a 60-day minimum written notice to the tenant. The enforcement of the ordinance, if it goes through the county process, would be handled by the county. If the city were to wish to do this, they would need to submit a letter to the Board of County Commissioners indicating that they'd like to be included in the county's Housing and Tenant Bill of Rights ordinance. We are told that it probably would take anywhere from six to eight weeks to go through that process. It would entail public hearings at the county level to amend their existing ordinance. Happy to take any questions.
Well, prior to that, we do have some public comment. Currently, I have three requests to speak. If anybody else wishes to address the council, the forms are in the back of the room. The first one is Ms. Jan Tumbelson. Welcome, Mrs. Tumbelson.
I just want to make sure it's set on three. Jan Tumbelson, a resident of Temple Terrace, mayor, council. I appreciate what you have outlined, city manager. Thank you. That's the synopsis. Okay. I think this issue needs to be postponed, because more research should be done. For example, I've given you Section 30-24 of Hillsborough County Ordinances, Name Discrimination in Real Estate Transactions and Practices, which I have given you a copy and should be reviewed at the same time the ordinance of 21-7 and 22-23. I would like the council to make more information available, so citizens of Temple Terrace can be more aware of this, and all information regarding how you think should be made available. Again, I request that you postpone this until the public gets more information, and the residents of Temple Terrace, you are here to protect them and do the best for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Tumbelson. The next speaker is Mr. Eric Kravitz. Mr. Kravitz, welcome. Good evening, sir.
Thanks for your attention. Eric Kravitz, also a resident here. I just have a few quick thoughts on this. So, I know Tenant's Bill of Rights, very inflammatory title. I looked through it. I didn't have any rights for tenants, actually. Most of it relates to landlords and their duties to provide notices. The only thing that really gives a right to a tenant is the Section 8 Non-Discrimination Based on Income provision. And under every single notice requirement, it says specifically, it does not provide a private cause of action to the tenant. So, I just want to make everyone aware, even though there's a title here that says Tenant's Bill of Rights. Didn't find very many of those. And I just also want to be clear, we all want everyone to have a good place to live. We all want to be proud of what we're doing, and, you know, I'm a small landlord here, and we're very proud of being in the housing sector, and we like to make sure that everyone has a good place to live at a reasonable price. Just out of curiosity, I looked into what it would cost to have someone take over this notice requirement for me. It does about $10 a month, so that would be another cost or something that I would have to do. Whenever we pass these ordinances, it always imposes a bureaucratic burden on various people. And, you know, again, I'm not opposed to people having a good balance of rights and responsibilities. I just wanted to briefly go over a couple of things that we have in our Florida Bar Lease Agreement. These are things that are standard. There's also Chapter 83 of the Florida Statutes, which contains a lot of provisions that give tenants a lot of rights. This is incorporated in our lease agreement and in appendix. The landlord has a contract here that provides for rules about late fees, rent, notices, tenants' rights of inspection, keys, locks, use, renewal, et cetera. So, a lot of things are already in the contract. To Mr. Baia's point, thank you for bringing up the 60-day notice. I found that very interesting. It slipped my mind. But it would actually lead to a situation where I have to give the tenant a 60-day notice on a 30-day lease, which I would be legally permitted under the contract to terminate, let's say, five weeks out, but which this ordinance then puts me in violation if I don't do it at least eight weeks out. So, I didn't know about that, so thank you. So I didn't know about that, so thank you for bringing that up. It's just a curious ordinance. If there's a Tenant's Bill of Rights coming up, I'd love to see it, but I don't think this is really it, because it doesn't provide the tenant any rights. It just provides bureaucratic burdens. It makes the landlord have to provide notices. Notices the tenants may not even want to receive, because, let's be honest, many of them don't know what to do with pages and pages of legalese. And it makes the entire relationship fraught with record-keeping and other gotchas, like this $500 fee, which the county is supposed to enforce. So I'm also against that, because I think Temple Terrace is a lovely place, and I think the people here know what they're doing. And I would hate to see more authority go further away from us. So thank you very much for your attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kravitz. Next speaker is Allison Fernandez, Councilmember-elect Fernandez. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Allison Fernandez, Temple Terrace resident. I am not in favor of what is in front of us right now. And I do ask you to potentially give it more time to consider it. And the reasons that I have concerns, first, is that a legal contract already exists between the tenant and the landlord, and that's governed by many state laws that are currently in existence. And a lot of the concerns that have been expressed that this Tenant Bill of Rights would cover are already covered in state statutes. So this, to me, seems very strong government overreach. The other thing that really concerns me about it is the enforcement from Hillsborough County. As a standalone jurisdictional city, we have our own governance. And in years past, we have decided not to have Hillsborough County have governance over our citizens. And in many ways, one, we didn't want to outsource our police and fire dispatching. And there was a reason for that. Our dispatchers know the city. And we govern ourselves, so I really have strong concerns about Hillsborough County exhibiting governance and enforcement over our citizens and our property owners in our city. So for those two reasons, I really have concerns about what's in front of this city council. And I also wonder, is this a problem in our city? I mean, are tenants and landlords expressing concerns that the city needs to address? And if that is the case, then it seems like solutions ought to be at the city level and not coming down from the county level. So I would ask you, if that is, if there have been concerns expressed, that would need to be part of this discussion and, again, handled at the city level with our own governance and our own enforcement policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. The last current request I have is from Ms. Ellen Snelling. Good evening, Mrs. Snelling.
I'm Ellen Snelling. I live in Temple Terrace. It's nice to be here. Ms. Donahue, I want to tell you, you know, really appreciate, I know it's not your last day, but I just want to appreciate everything, because someone else brought it up before. I just, I do have concerns about this. I think the idea behind it is very good, and I know we all want to protect all of our citizens and our tenants. But I do have concerns. And one thing I thought about is, is any other city within our county going with Hillsborough County under their ordinance? And Tampa has a separate ordinance, and I call Plant City, and they are not going to be having a Tenant Bill of Rights. So we would be the only city. As Eric had brought up, there is a statute at the state level in Chapter 83, the landlord and tenant. So, and there's quite a few rules in there. So if we do go under this ordinance, is there any possibility of state preemption? Because there are some things that are more strict than the state law. I really think it's something we got to think about, especially the way the election went and the way our legislature is going to look. We don't really want them coming back down on home rule again, saying like, you know, that, "Oh, look at these cities and counties that are making these strict ordinances for Tenant Bill of Rights." And then I guess there's always some possibility, what if the landlords think it's too strict and they're not treated properly? Would they sue the city? I don't know. I heard at the last meeting that you talked about that the Hillsborough County, the Code Board or some group within Hillsborough County was doing sweeps of ads. So is that something else? Do we want that in Temple Terrace, where they're going to be looking at our landlords' ads to make sure they're not worded a certain way, or they're saying, "We prefer not to have Section 8"? Do we want that oversight from the county? As well as, do we want them enforcing within our city, which was already brought up? I think possibly, you know, we might need more research and get some more information. And what is the best solution for Temple Terrace? Is it best for us to go under the umbrella of Hillsborough County? Or do we want to look at solutions of the issues we have here ourself? And landlords during the pandemic, a lot of them were suffering the same as tenants. And so do we want to give them undue regulation and restrictions on top of the problems that they've already had? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Snelling. That's currently the last request I have to speak. Are there other members of the public? I have one more. Mr. Snelling. Well, I say one more. I have one more right now.
Can I fill out the request after the fact?
Yes, you may. Good evening, sir.
So I had some questions to consider. First of all, I do agree that this requires more consideration from the council. I think we should postpone it and let the citizens be more aware of what is involved in this. And I personally had some more like bureaucratic-like concerns about how this would be administered that weren't brought up by the previous speakers. First of all, assuming we were to adopt this agreement, does the city have any intent to formally review the effectiveness, the impact of this ordinance after a specified time period? Have you guys thought about that? Also, how difficult would it be to terminate this agreement if the city decided they didn't want to be involved? Is it strictly another letter to the county commission and say, "We're not interested anymore"? The third question I had was, what if the county commission changed their ordinance in some way? Do we have any input into what's going to be in the ordinance down the road? And any recourse if we don't like the changes that they made? I just think you guys should think about that, you know, before we make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snelling. Are there other members of the public? Welcome.
Gina D'Angelo, Temple Terrace resident. Like many of the others have mentioned, I believe this is overreached by the Board of County Commissioners. And the requirements when you sign a lease, they're spelled out in the lease. The late fees are spelled out in the lease. It's a contract between the tenant and the landlord. And I don't think, I don't feel that the government should be involved in that. And like Eric mentioned, it's a lot more bureaucratic burden for the landlord. And I just don't think that it's necessary. And, how do I put this? There's just, there's no need for a Tenant's Bill of Rights as stated in the ordinance.
Thank you. Other members of the public? You've already spoken. You don't get another bite?
I have one comment.
Okay. We got three minutes. That's... Are there other members of the public? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment part. This is your last going once. Okay. Would you indulge me for a moment?
Sure.
I'd like to, I'm not to convince anybody, but I'd like to try to put this in the larger context here. First of all, whether you agree or not, I don't want anybody going away thinking that your elected officials don't read anything or don't do any homework, or just because you may not have done this. You elected us to dig pretty deep, and we do our job pretty well. So I don't feel like, personally, I don't think we need more time to read more. I don't know what more I'd read. I've already read. You think I would vote on something like this without doing my homework? I don't do that. But let me put this in a little larger context to just try to explain what we're trying to do and why this is so important, all right? So bear with me a little bit, because I got to start at the beginning of the story. So I'm going to get to this, but let me give the background here. As you know, Florida, and Hillsborough County specifically, is on fire. We have more economic development and tourism. We are shattering records every month. We are bringing in businesses like crazy. Our tourism, which is not just people going to Busch Gardens, it's conferences. It's commercial tourism, it's conferences. We are one of the hottest conference markets in the entire country right now. We're hotter than Orlando, which has never happened. We are bringing in businesses, you know, Temple Terrace is part of the Economic Development Corporation. We are bringing in businesses, shattering records. We have never seen this kind of economic growth. So the reason I say that is, there are two big threats to this that we talk about at the EDC all the time. And the two big threats are, can we continue to supply an adequate supply of labor? Because if the labor goes away or dries up or gets all taken up, the companies won't come. That's one of the top things they look at. There's a few of them, tax burden, location to port, rail, but one of them is labor. Luckily, we have USF and some of the other universities, but labor is big. That's why you're seeing these trade academies pop up all over the place, because labor, labor, labor. Part of labor is housing that workers can afford to live in. We're not talking about the work, the poor. We're not talking about, we're talking about working people, teachers and stuff. You're seeing this in some very affluent cities in the state. Sarasota, Naples, places where there are tons of money. People can't afford to live. They're even contemplating buildings, teacher housing, public housing for schoolteachers, because they can't get teachers, because nobody can afford to live in Sarasota anymore. The second thing, by the way, is transportation. So when we're talking transportation stuff, it's not just that we're tired of being stuck in traffic. It's, we're talking economic development also. So the two big threats are housing that's affordable and transportation. That's what we worry about at the EDC. Obviously, this won't fix all of that, but that's the backdrop when we're having these conversations. So just to give you, and these numbers vary a little bit, depending on what source you get them from, but the trend is the same. Even if you're going to go online, I know you're going to find a number that's 2% different than mine. You're going to, "Ah, ah, ah," right? So the numbers differ a little bit, but the trends are the same. The average rent in Hillsborough County this month, right now, is $1,915. Now, without something to compare that to, you're like, "Well, okay, that's the median," which means there's half above, half below. We know how the averages work. 2019, November 2019, the average was $1,100. So it's increased almost 60% in our market in three years. Now, a lot of contributing factors and a lot of things. Now, that doesn't affect anybody in this room, because we all own our homes. We're not feeling this. But the people renting apartments are feeling it, right? This ordinance proposed, well, the county ordinance, not proposed. All we're talking about is whether to opt in or not. This ordinance doesn't establish rent controls. Rent controls are illegal in the state of Florida, except in very narrow circumstances. And we're not in that, like post-disaster hurricane, stuff like that. Other than that, rent controls are illegal. This doesn't do any of that. So, another thing that goes into this is homelessness. Now homelessness in Hillsborough County is tabulated every year. They count the homeless people every year. There's a couple of ways they do that. It's not perfect, but they do it the same way every year. So even though the number may not be perfect, the trend is accurate, because they do it the same way. Homelessness is up, not very much, 3% or 4% in Hillsborough County. Which is not, I mean, that's bad if you're one of those 3%, but it's not terrible. Family homelessness in Hillsborough County is up 21%. Now, I don't know if those people lost their homes because of rent increases or not, but it stands to reason, common sense seems to think there's some kind of connection here. Family homelessness is up 21%, right? Folks, I understand your concern about regulating our local landlords. There's a lot of people in Temple Terrace who are small-scale, you know, they might have 10, 20 properties that they run out. That's what they do. By and large, the vast majority of landlords are fine-upstanding people who largely are already adhering to what this would require. I mean, it might change the dates, the days, a little bit from what the, but it's, this should be no onus on most of our landlords, because most of them are already doing the right thing. They're already doing this. Who is not doing this are the corporate companies, the Wall Street corporations, who are coming into Hillsborough County all over Florida, all over the country, really, and buying up the rental housing market by the tens of thousands of units, right? In the third quarter of last year, 25% of the rental property sales in Hillsborough County, Hillsborough County, not to Miami, Hillsborough County, 25% of them were not sold to individuals like Mr. Kravitz. They're sold to corporations. Wall Street corporations, most of them out of state, many of them out of the country. If you have an IRA or any kind of mutual fund or anything like that, the chances are that part of your money is in companies that are buying up the rental market. The reason they're buying up the rental market is it's red hot, right? They're making money hand over fist on these rental properties. These people are the people who are not doing this. These are the people who, whatever their lease, right? I know what the bar says, this is what the lease should say, but that doesn't mean that's what the lease does say, right? And these people are out of China, or Germany, or Illinois, or wherever, right? They do have to adhere to Chapter 83 of Florida statutes, but Chapter 83 does not provide this level of, doesn't require the notice of 60 days if you're going to raise their rent over 5%. So you got to renew your lease a month or so before it expires. And all of a sudden, they say, "Well, your rent's going up 800 bucks a month." That's not an arbitrary figure, by the way. That's what happened to my daughter in Lakeland. That was the number, $800 a month. Now you've got three weeks to go find a new place to live. Try doing that in Hillsborough County, folks. Try doing that. Try finding a place in three weeks where you can move, okay? This will not stop that. We all understand that. But we're trying to have a positive impact on a problem that is huge. And it's not just huge because we think people are being mean. It's huge because these corporations are coming in, and they're not giving notice of late fees, right? They're not. I talked to somebody who was given a $150 late fee because the rent check was one penny short. And they were given a $150 late fee. Is it happening in Temple Terrace? Yeah, I don't know how widespread it is, but I do get complaints. So, oh, another thing to talk about is the render. I told you, the average rent's $1,915. I promise I'm going to land the plane. Average rent is $1,915. The average income for these same people is $40,000 a year, which if you do the math, that's the average. There's probably no single person who's average. But I mean, there's half above, half below. We understand that. But keep in mind, there's half below, right? On average, the median is, these people are paying 57% of their household income just for rent in Hillsborough County, right? Now, I don't know if there's any single person, but that's the average, right? Rule of thumb is 30% is what you should be paying for housing, and that gives you 70% for the rest of your stuff, right? They're paying almost double that. So what does this ordinance require? Okay, the word, well, it's stats. I mean, you can look them up. I can tell you where to get them. So what does this ordinance require? It does require you to consider all income streams. Now, we talked a lot about Section 8, but that's not the only one. There's also VASH, which is the Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing. MacDill Air Force Base is in a huge crisis right now because their military members assigned here can't afford to live here. There's been meetings and meetings and meetings with the leaders at MacDill Air Force Base over what to do, because they don't have enough housing and their lower-ranking service members have nowhere to live. They can't live here, right? They don't make enough money. So it requires you to consider and accept all legal forms of income, okay? Now, I understand the, there's some ramification. I get that. But in this market, that's what it does. It requires you to give notice to your tenants of 60 days if you're going to raise the rent over 5%. It doesn't say you can't do it. It just says you have to give a 60-day notice. It doesn't say you can't do it, it just says you have to give a 60-day notice, right? Well, I could see that. I mean, I just don't think that's so much of a burden that this is a big problem. It requires later, notice of late fees. You can't just arbitrarily say you're a penny short and now it's 150 bucks, and if you don't like it, I'm going to evict you, right? There's a process for that. It requires notice of what the late fee is and what it's for and what it's going to be. Doesn't restrict how much rent a landlord can charge. It does not restrict how much a landlord can raise their rent. It just requires them to give notice. Does not change the eviction rules or process at all. That's covered by Chapter 83 of Florida statutes already, it doesn't change eviction. So we have three options before the council, and I, and it's up to you, whatever you want to do, right? There's three options. One, we can do nothing, and we can say Chapter 83 covers this. Well, it doesn't cover it because Hillsborough County, Tampa, St. Pete, Pinellas, Orange County, every city or county that I'm familiar, well, not everyone, that's an exaggeration, but most of the cities across the state and counties across the state are looking for some sort of remedy to this crisis because it's even worse in some places, like Naples and Sarasota, Boca Raton. It's terrible. So we're not in a vacuum here. Everybody across the state is like, what are we going to do, right? So we can do nothing, and then we can be the only place in the area that doesn't have these protections, and we can sit around and wait for unscrupulous landlords to want to come here because we don't have any rules and everywhere else does. I don't know, that's an option. We can write our own ordinance, which we talked about, about a year and a half ago when the county was doing this, we talked about writing our own ordinance. Couple issues that came up. One was we don't have the staff to enforce it. We have three code enforcement officers, and we don't want to take them off of doing what they already do because what, they really can make an argument that they need more already. We can't take them off because every time you get a complaint along this line, you have to do an investigation, you have to go and get copies, see when the notice was. You've got to do something, you can't just, it's not just answering the phone. We could write our own ordinance, and as far as the question about can we, does this, is this preempted by the state? No, there's an Attorney General opinion already that says that these types of, that the Hillsborough County ordinance is sufficient, AGOs, there's already an AGO opinion on this. I do have concern, and mark my words because this is going to come around. I do have concern that the more fractured we are with doing this, like Tampa didn't go with Hillsborough County, they wanted their own. St. Pete didn't go with Pinellas, they wrote their own. I'm concerned about the cities going their own way because the more fractured you do this, the more opportunity there is that the state is going to step in and preempt this and say, we, we can't have these companies and everywhere they do business, the rules are different. So stand by, that's common. So we could do nothing, we can write our own ordinance, or we can do what this discussion was going to do, and that is to ask the county to apply their ordinance to us and enforce it. They're willing to do that. Those are really the three options we have. And, and I mean, if this is an onerous burden on landlords, we certainly don't want that. But I don't, I, I just can't believe that it's going to kill anybody to give 60-day notice that they're going to raise their rent over 5%. So that's the context, and I don't know, what do you want to do? Yes?
I had a lot of things to say, but you said all of them probably kind of better than I was going to say them. But there were a couple of things that I wrote down that kind of add to the picture that, that you drew, and, you know, just seeing this from a perspective of, of a tenant. You know, we've seen these high rate hikes where, where people's rents are going up, like you said, 800 dollars a month, 350 a month, and it's sudden, and you don't have time to pivot or adjust, and there's not enough housing inventory to find something else, especially in a short term. COVID-era housing assistance has ended. Affordable housing down south was destroyed in Hurricane Ian. And legally speaking, Florida law favors tenants, and eviction proceedings are fast. And here in Hillsborough County, we've had a 20% increase in population in the last 10 years while we've only had a 10% increase in housing units. So that's a problem. We were already behind, and now we're more behind. So shifting people around with rent increases and not letting people have the notice that they need really adds to that problem. Like the mayor said, these are coming up all over the state. This isn't just Hillsborough County, Pinellas County. We're hearing these conversations in Orange County, Boynton Beach, sometimes just cities. And I agree with the statement about it being a, a fractured, a fractured thing weakens it, like you said. So, I mean, I'd like to make the motion right now to, go ahead. Oh, is it too early? We're talking first? All right.
I'll call one.
I'm done.
Once again, you've done an awesome job of explaining a very difficult thing to read. And yes, we did read, I read the Tampa ordinance, I've read the Hillsborough County ordinance. They're just a few words different. I think it's, you know, it's one thing for Tampa to say it needs its own, they have their own enforcement, we don't, okay? And one of the things that were said at the Affordable Housing Advisory Board meeting was that Plant City was going to devise one, and we would be the only outlier. And when you drive between Hillsborough County and Temple Terrace, you really, unless you live in Temple Terrace, you don't know where one ends and the other begins, and it just starts to set up that ambiguity that you mentioned. There are an awful lot of rules that we all live by, and for some reason, every time we try to clarify a rule, people say, oh, this is overreach. These rules, like you said, 60-day notice, and I know that was mentioned by a landlord here this evening, but 60 days' notice, considering that there is no other alternative to leaving and getting a different apartment, especially if the rent is above 5%, that, that's, that's just common courtesy. And I would expect, we all believe the best of the people who live here and work here, I would expect that our landlords are doing the right thing, but there's always that bad apple who makes it hard on everybody. So I, I, I'm happy that you're going to make that motion, and I do appreciate all the work that you've done on the Affordable Housing Board because they hammered this thing out. This is not something that they threw together. This has been going on for a long time. They've been looking at this since the problem erupted during COVID. So I also want to know, I believe the Board of County Commissioners is ready to vote on this. So if we don't do something, we will be left out just because we waited too long, am I right? Do you know, do they have a date?
No.
They're waiting.
We would need to send them a letter that we are interested in being made part of this. Mention had been made that, you know, this is county overreach. They didn't come to us asking, wanting us to be part of this, we went to them. So they're not overreaching, we're asking to be included because of the enforcement provision. Also, I think there was a misstatement with regard to a, a, a month-to-month tenant. It doesn't require 60 days' notice for a month-to-month, it's only 30 days. Right now, Florida statutes require, I believe, 15 days, so it's only 15 extra days. And as a landlord myself, it costs me the cost of two extra pages to print out the notice of rights to attach to the leases I use. That's, that's the full expense, the cost of printing out two pieces of paper. So, and St. Pete's had theirs since at least 2019. So I just wanted to say that.
Just to clarify, this ordinance is already in effect. This isn't new for Hillsborough County.
Okay.
This is not a new.
So this is just, we're just adding ourselves.
This isn't a proposed ordinance for Hillsborough County. This, this is already in effect. All we're doing is contemplating whether to ask them to include us.
Yes, which they have agreed to, I understand.
They have.
Yes, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Councilmember Chambers?
Thank you, Mayor. What's nice about being last again is I don't have to reiterate all the stuff you just said. Thank you all three for doing a great job. I don't have a problem with the notice periods. I think it's only fair to have this much notice and to give people a chance to find other places. I don't have a problem with the county administering this because they do that at other levels. Our court system's run by the county, we don't have that, so that it just makes sense. It also makes sense to me to be the same as everybody else. If I was a landlord and I had properties in the county and in Tampa and Temple Terrace, I would want everything to be about the same as I could so I wouldn't get caught doing something wrong in one of the jurisdictions. So I don't really have a problem with any of this and will support it.
One more quick comment, I know I already spoke a long time, but Mr. Snelling brought up what I think are some very valid questions that I wanted to, because I had some of those same questions. What would happen, what will we do if the county, because we don't control the B.O.C.C., what, what will we do if they revise this ordinance and adopt provisions that we don't want to, right? So that, that, I had the same question. There's two solutions to that. One of them is we, we would have input, but how much weight they would put on that, who knows? So we would have input, but suppose that they didn't listen to us and they did, which is probably likely, let's be real, right? They, they probably do what they want to do anyway. If they adopted something that we didn't as a body support, for instance, rent control's illegal, but suppose they did something like that, that we said, wait, we signed on to the terms of November 22, we didn't want that. There is a simple solution, and that is at that point, we could write a city ordinance. If there's a conflict between a city ordinance and a county ordinance, the city ordinance prevails. So the quick solution to that is to write a city ordinance. Now, would we then have to figure out how to do the enforcement? Yet we would, yes. So could that happen? It could, right? But that is an out, so we could easily get out of some future terms that might be put in. So those are valid questions because we have had that discussion also, so. All right, other discussion?
I move to direct staff to write the letter to the county requesting that we join their tenant bill of rights. Is that sufficient?
I'll second that motion.
The only thing I would add or ask to, for clarification, is when their county ordinance first took effect, they had a, I think it was a 90-day lead-in before enforcement was done, and I would ask in the letter that I've got to write, that I ask them to give, from whatever date they approve our inclusion, to make it 90 days before they do any enforcement, just like they gave their landlords, we've got to give a chance for our landlords.
And on that, I did attend the Affordable Housing Board the other day as an alternate for Ms. Abel, and they said that, that, you know, theirs, like you said, they are having education opportunities daily to get people up to speed on what it really means and what, you know, there's a lot of what people read, and they read a one sentence and they think it means one thing, and we all know these, these ordinances are not easy to read, and so that they've been able to, to get through those cases, almost every one of them, without having to go any further with litigation or anything. So that, that's, I would, I would agree to that if you change your motion.
Sure, I'll amend what I said to include the 90-day lead-in in the letter.
And I'll second that motion as amended.
Discussion on the motion? Those in favor, signature?
Aye.
Opposed? No nays?
Thank you.
Mr. Baye, we'll get together on the drafting and then. Where are we?
We are at the.
Council business.
Well, we have a logo to approve.
Welcome.
Is that going to be on our screen?
Is it going to be?
Cheryl?
We could put it there, and I could hold, I mean, he has a camera trained on that spot, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, hi, I'm Karen Gaskin, and I'm chair of the Centennial Committee. I wasn't with you two weeks ago when some of the logos and slogans were first presented to you. My co-chair, Ms. Hudson, was here, and I know that there were some recommendations made by the council about things you would like to see maybe slightly changed. And so your city staff, Ms. Hayes, and the committee worked together to make those changes for you, and what we're hoping for tonight is that we will get your approval so we can move forward and start doing some of the planning for the centennial that involves the slogan and the logo. So I, I'm, it's, I know that you have copies of it, that you were given copies as well as seeing the one that is here, and I think that the things that you recommended were all addressed. Does anyone have any comments or questions that we can answer?
I like it. I'm not an art guy, but I like it.
You know art when you see it.
I like it, I like it. The tree looks like a tree, the orange looks like an orange, we got one golfer instead of two, I like it.
And the kayaker, we understand what he is now.
Okay, so you're all happy with this logo?
Did it go from orange to black, or is that just for tonight?
We, there's a lot of variability on what we may end up doing with color and different colors, depending on the application. There'll always be a black and white version available as well because we understand that that's required for certain things. But as far as how we'll color it, we, we may get very inventive in that area in the future, so.
Put that on polo shirts and sell it?
Yes, we're even thinking flags that residents can buy, you know, we, this is everybody's centennial, this is everybody's centennial in this community, and so we're going to think of a lot of different ways to make sure that everybody gets included in this very cheerful event, so.
Councilmember Chambers, what do you think?
I like it.
You like it?
Yeah.
You good?
I'm really good with it, yeah.
Councilmember Abel?
I'm good.
Councilmember Donahue?
I'm good.
City manager, what do you think?
Love it.
City attorney, can you see it?
I can see it, I said it's missing a coyote.
Oh, no.
Oh, no, no coyotes, please.
City clerk?
It looks like the 1925 should be moved a little to the left. Talking about like balance.
Yeah.
Center of the bottom.
You think maybe a whole thing just needs to shift one fox to the left?
The words are flush.
Oh, you mean the words?
They're dead center, she says.
No, they're not centered, they're.
Or they're centered to the top, too.
You can't do the center at the top or you're running to the golfer.
Right. Oh, I see, they're, they line up with the top, yeah.
Yeah.
They line up here.
They line up there.
So that it can accommodate everything.
Yeah.
I can't, if we moved it, it would be awkward.
Yeah.
I see, okay.
The A would run into.
So, so they're flush this way. Okay.
Anything else? City clerk? Look all right? Public, what do you think? Everybody give me a thumbs up, you good? Ms. Tummelson, I don't know, you good with this? You like it? You don't care? You gotta care, okay.
This is going to be all over the city. This is going to be in store front windows, it's going to be in.
You're going to see this a lot.
Yards, we hope, signs.
Mr. Ritter, what do you think?
I think it's okay, I just have to go buy another flagpole.
Yes, 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 we would really like it if you'd do that.
I currently flag the American flag 24/7 because it's lit. That's required.
Can't hear him.
We have to, we'll give you a, we'll work this out.
Yes, we will.
Okay, all right.
So do we have your approval as a committee?
Sounds like you do, yes.
Go forward. Thank you very much, City Council Mayor, I appreciate your.
Thank you for all your work, the committee, I know how hard you've worked, and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're still under council business, folks. Is there carryover council business or board reports?
I have not carryover council, I have new business and board report.
Well, that's, oh, I'm sorry, new business and board report. Any other carryover council business? Okay, we'll shift and go to new business and board reports, which is where board reports are. Councilmember Chambers?
Okay, well, before my board report, I want to talk about. Okay, well, before my board report, I want to talk about new business. I want to say how great Saturday was in Temple Terrace. Holy cow, in the morning, we had trot through the terrace, which is a good event for Terrace Community Middle School. Then we had the 49th Annual Arts Festival. Saturday was a fantastic day there, great weather. We had, I think, and I didn't, don't have the numbers yet, but I think we had the best attendance of any of the days at Woodmont location. Sunday was a good day, too. It's always smaller than Saturday. But anyway, Saturday was a great day with the arts festival. I want to thank the city for the partnership with the Arts Council, the Parks and Recreation or Lees and Services Department, the work they did, the police, public works, the, the normal suspects that always help us out on events. But thank you very much for that partnership and the partnership with the Golf and Country Club for their use of the fairway. And then that night, we had the 100-year celebration of the Golf and Country Club, and that was a very nice event, those of you that attended. And I did for only a couple hours because I was tired, but everybody else had a really good time and stayed late with, what I understand was an amazing laser light show at the end. But Saturday was just a good Temple Terrace day. So on a board report, Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, which is one of my boards, we had our monthly meeting yesterday, and one of the big topics was food insecurity in the Tampa Bay area and trying to increase what we just heard St. Vincent de Paul talk about, and with our community gardens we have in Temple Terrace, to try to get more locally grown food. And this group that did the presentation is trying, their goal is to get every square foot of spare public space in the Bay Area to have some kind of gardening potential, whether it's a pot on the porch or in the backyard, or a small bed in the backyard, or at corners of the rec center properties, or any of those different things. An amazing statistic, in the United States, the average distance our food comes from is 1,500 miles. So, food that's grown here in the Bay Area probably gets shipped somewhere else to come back to us because it goes to processing plants. So they're working on things. Their goal in 10 years is to try to have 2% of the food in our, that we use here come from local areas. That's a big ask because it's way below that now. But I just thought it was interesting and pertinent to what we heard tonight. And there'll be more, there'll be a big presentation, and I'll send it out to you when I get it on that. So, that was, that was that on that board. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other?
I want to make a comment about the community garden. You know, we are, again, an amazing city in that we have three community gardens here. So I hope you bragged on Temple Terrace a little bit because.
I did.
Yes.
I did.
Because not only do we offer that, we, we helped start the one at St. Vincent de Paul. I mean, we didn't, we, we advised them on how to do the different, the setup of the beds and what have you. But absolutely, I mean, that's amazing that they're encouraging. So what they're doing is encouraging people to do what we've done.
And there's a big group, and this was a presentation by a, a group in the Anthropology Department of USF, and they are working real hard there. They're our neighbor, and we want to increase our activity with USF. This is something that we should get involved with at their level because they're trying to preach it all through the Bay Area. And we're next door.
Very good. My report is that I will be teaching civics to second graders and fifth graders at Lewis Elementary on Thursday at the Great American Teach-In. And I have to, I have to jockey, you know, which class is going to hear what because I usually do a recycling class and a class on why do your parents pay taxes? And you know, the person who's always the most surprised is the teacher. They're like, oh, yeah, that's right, we do, that is where our tax, I'm like, you're being paid by tax dollars. So anyway, it's a joyful day. If any of you, I see, let's see, I see engineers, I see, I see IT folks, I see, lots of people out there. You know, I see sanitation. You're all going to be mentioned in my presentation, but if any of you, or any of you in the listening audience have time Thursday, pick a school, call them up now and let them know that you'd like to share either your hobby or your profession. They will be more than happy to have you come into the classroom. And now that the COVID restrictions have been lifted, they definitely want to encourage people to come back into the school. So, so Great American Teach-In, it's been going on for a long time. I'm glad I'm part of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Abel? Okay, very good. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just wanted to commend our staff and all the community volunteers that worked throughout the hurricane. It wasn't much of a hurricane, thankfully, after the fact, but we were prepared and we couldn't have done it without everybody's work on it. So, thank you. If I could have Mr. Langfeld come up, our Lees and Services Director? He has an announcement I think we've all been waiting for.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. To, to piggyback on James's comments about great days in the city of Temple Terrace, we have another one coming up in just a couple of weeks. On Saturday, December 3rd, there are three great events that are going to be going on in the city of Temple Terrace. The first one I'm bringing up just because of James's comment about how great this past Saturday was. The family complex has been selected to host the finals for the state-level senior game swimming championships. So that's going to be held at the, at the family complex on the morning of Saturday, December 3rd, and on Saturday, December 4th. But then the good stuff really happens on Saturday night. Our annual lighted golf cart parade and Winter Wonderland event. To start with the golf cart parade, everybody who has golf carts in town, please come out, please support this event. It is a great event. There is a $10 registration fee to join the event. However, that $10 fee to join the event will include your golf cart sticker for 2023. Just as a bonus, so.
It's $10.
Yeah. Staging for the parade will be at the family complex and start at 5:00 PM. The parade will begin at 6:00 PM and, and at Woodmont Park, where we'll be hosting the Winter Wonderland activities. Anybody interested in taking part in the golf cart parade, please go to the Family Recreation Complex to get signed up for that. Pay your $10, get your golf cart registration sticker taken care of at the same time. Then Winter Wonderland comes up at Woodmont Park in the first fairway of the golf cart. The event takes place from 5:30 to 8:30 PM. We have some great activities lined up this year, including an ice slide, a snow pile, which is new for this year, for the children to play on, holiday caroling, food trucks, carnival games, the annual tree lighting ceremony will take place, for which I hope you will all take part in, photo booth, and of course, Santa Claus will be there. The tree lighting will take place at the, at the gazebo at 7:00 PM. Santa Claus will be available for children of all ages to come and make their Christmas wishes. This event could not be possible without our generous sponsors, Glidewell Advisors and Joanne Kelly Properties and Mission Hill Church. So I hope to see everybody out for Winter Wonderland coming up on Saturday, December 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langfeld.
The, the next item, Mr. Mayor, is regarding Capwood Avenue. So the council knows, several weeks ago, the city contractor paved Capwood Avenue. Unfortunately, the, the work product that was done was not to our satisfaction. So we have directed the contractor to repave that street. And I'm going to ask Mr. Tinch, our utilities director, to come up and give us more details.
Welcome back.
Feels like it's been forever, right? So a little bit of background on what happened there on Capwood. The seams where the two asphalt laments touch, actually, there was some unevenness in it. So we worked with the contractor initially to go out, reheat the seam. So in the middle of the road where the two overlayments touch, they reheated it, they tried to roller it back out, it did not work. We asked them to go back out again, they went back out again, same thing, unfortunately, they had the same result. So in talking with the contractor, we made a determination that when we move forward with this fiscal year's resurfacing, which will include basically the remainder of that subdivision, of the River Run subdivision, they are going to go out and mill up that surface that was put down. Basically, it runs between the two speed bumps where the Tico easements located. So if you do drive that area and notice it as you venture towards the center of the road, you'll feel a little bit of bounce in your left tire. So the long shore of it is, we're going to go out, they're going to mill up the existing surface, the new surface they just put down, and put down another overlay within that area to smooth that out. So that is the intent and likely will probably take place after the first of the year.
Okay.
At no additional charge.
That's what I was going to ask you. So it's going to be like it is until after the first of the year?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any way to communicate this to, that, the residents in that neighborhood to let them know? I mean, I, because, you know, I know we're doing this in a public meeting, but believe it or not, people don't sit at home and watch these meetings.
Right.
How can we, how can we communicate that? Because if you live in the neighborhood, you go, oh, man, there's my tax dollars at work, the roads aren't, you know, doesn't.
And we've certainly had a number of individuals call, and lawyers are concerned about the final product. And we're, we're letting them know individually, but I'm sure we can work with Lori on potentially putting something on the website. I don't know that going door-to-door.
No, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't. But I would like maybe some type of outreach because, you know, it's a negative, it's kind of embarrassing to go back and say they didn't do the road right, but it's also a positive that we didn't accept that.
Right.
It's not up to our level, and we're going to make them fix it.
We can, we'll work to get that out through social media, and we'll look at other alternatives in case.
Yeah.
We could potentially even look at a roadside signage or something along that.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Just to let folks know that that section will be resurfaced.
Okay.
Are we just talking about one street?
Yes.
Yes, just Capwood.
Would it be simple enough just to go the old-fashioned way and send them a U.S. mail letter?
Well, it's, it's the street that enters that neighborhood, so it would probably be the broader neighborhood.
Because everybody lives in there, has to drive.
Oh, that's true, okay. You're right. All right, sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Members of council, so the next item is actually pertaining to the fountain at the fountain shops that was alluded to in the last meeting by a member of the public. Staff has once again reached out to the property manager of that site. The, the latest detail is, the last time we talked about this, we had indicated they were on their next, they're on the second contractor. And we are told now that the estimate, because apparently there's a, they believe what happened was that the site may have been hit by lightning, and so it actually fried some of the components. They're in a vault under the, the fountain. And that led to the sump pump not working, and so the sump pump flooded, the rest of the components were, were damaged. And so they're telling us that they need to replace, this is a much more extensive repair. The numbers that they've told us are now at $40,000, potentially to repair the fountain, and they're claiming that there's a 15-week lead time for the components. The other issue is that the property manager, who has been a very good resource for the city to work with, he is no longer with the company, with the owner. So we are now contemplating about what to do next. We want to make sure that their, their feet are held to the fire so that they don't lose sight of this important piece of, of the community, and it was included in their site plan, so we're looking at those alternatives at this point. Also wanted to follow up, the last meeting, the vice mayor had mentioned some concerns over homesteaded properties that are under code enforcement pending action. And we have internally, we have met the legal department, community development, code compliance, and myself, looking at what other tools we could employ. And as a result of that meeting, what we have done is, there's basically three properties right now that are pretty much our most egregious cases. And we have issued notice to the property owner effective this afternoon, actually, that we're going to take the, one of the properties, the worst one in our opinion, to county court, the property owner to county court. That is, again, another means, it, it makes the property owner have to go to court. If they don't go to court, they could be in contempt of court. And we hope that the judge will look favorably on the case. One of these properties has had years and years of basically fines accruing. So that's, that's one avenue, that's the short-term solution that we're pursuing right now at this very moment. Another thing we're looking at as well concurrently is to perhaps bring you a chronic nuisance ordinance, which some communities and some counties in the state of Florida have adopted, which could be used for certain issues. It's, it's practical, for example, if there are issues where people just let their yards grow out of control and they don't, they just thumb their nose at the city. In those instances, for example, the city would be able to go in and address that nuisance, or if there are other nuisances such as noise and things like that, and we make multiple responses, you get to a point where you, you are able to bill for those responses once you get past a certain threshold, for example, or if you have to do and go in and do work yourself as a community. And those costs could be assessed to the tax bill. And they would take priority, actually, over other potential elements of your, of your tax bill. So that's a tool that other communities have used effectively, apparently. So we're looking at that, and potentially we'll bring you an ordinance for your consideration. And that's all I have.
That's a lot.
Councilmember, questions for the city manager? City clerk, I think you had a few comments?
I did. I, I received a few calls about the election and when the newly elected council members would be sworn in. And our charter refers to that and says newly elected members of city council shall be sworn in and take office on the regularly scheduled city council meeting after certification, on the second regularly scheduled city council meeting after certification of the election results. The election results haven't been certified yet. They require 10 days after for the overseas ballots, and we haven't even hit that 10 days yet. And then they will certify it. I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that it will be done before our December 6 meeting so that the second meeting would be December 20th where the new council members would be, would be sworn in.
Okay. Councilmembers, questions for the city clerk?
Thank you for that clarification.
City attorney?
I was just going to be talking about the code enforcement issue, but the city manager covered that, so I have nothing.
Okay, good. Directors? Any other business? Councilmembers, any other business to come before the council? Okay, we will stand adjourned.